Good evening, everyone. The time is now six P M. And the Spring Lake Board of Commissioners raising their meeting is now called to order. I do ask that you silence all your cell phones and please keep all five of our conversations to the barest of minimums out of respect for the business of the town. I'd like to begin by inviting Evangelist Stanford to come in and lead us in our invocation and pledge allegiance. Please stand and join us if you choose to.
God is good. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening in the morning. Thanking you for this day, we should have kept you safe. We thank you Lord for keeping our firefighters and our policemen, Lord, our mayor, and all the staff. We thank you for keeping them safe, in the name of Jesus. Keeping our children at school safe. Keeping our bus drivers safe. We thank you, Lord. And dear Heavenly Father, you see the things that's going on in this world. There's so much going on. And more so much killing than famine members. And dear Heavenly Father, in person, I ask in the name of Jesus, that you step in and be step at all, in the name of Jesus. Calm it down, Heavenly Father. Work with our leaders, Lord. Speak to their hearts, Lord, in the name of Jesus. There's only one God, and you belong to one. You're the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. There is nobody else but you. You are healer, you are deliverer, you're peacemaker. And what you said to ask, and do not ask in a mist, and I'm asking, is he, my Lord, that you step in the midst of this meeting tonight, in the name of Jesus? So let us come together, in the name of Jesus. God, because it's all about you and about your people. And we are your people. And Lord, I thank you, in the name of Jesus. Bless our president, Heavenly Father, our governor, in the name of Jesus. Lord, I thank you, and I praise you, and I glorify you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We will now move on to additions and deletions from the agenda. Commissioner Thompson, followed by Commissioner Poses.
I'd like to delete the mayor Procham's presentation she had on for two minutes, which is five minutes later.
Commissioner Poses.
Add a yard of my presentation, please.
So we will add that right in spot in A for the, uh, Commissioner, or excuse me, Mayor Procham. Who, where's that? All right, I'm now called for approval of the agenda. Commissioner Poses.
Motion for the agenda with the amended changes.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Sir?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now call for approval of the consent items, which are the draft minutes of the August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five work session, and two military and veterans affairs advisory committees' applications for the reappointment of Ingrid Turner and the reappointment of Irene Rosa. Commissioner Lachlan.
So.
Commissioner Turner.
I second.
Any questions?
Commissioner Lachlan.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. With the reappointment of Ingrid Turner and Irene Rosa, both of them longstanding members of the Military Veterans Affairs Advisory Committee, and both of them want to continue to serve our Military Veterans Affairs Advisory Committee. So I just want to welcome them back. I want to tell you the hard work that they do each and every month, meeting and every event that we have. Those are two of our stalwarts that work hard out there. So glad to have them back.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, we'll now move on to our public comments. Remembering that our public comments are limited to three minutes, there is a timer on the screen above that will let you know up your time. And each speaker is only allowed a total of three minutes. There will be no response from the board to being public comments. Please, when you're on to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And we'll begin with Miss Bayes.
My name is Bayes. I'm on a whole walk in U.S. And I made it.
I'm sorry. In what?
And I made it.
A.
Okay. What we're talking about is the signs that I would like to see up on the roads where children are playing. I cannot see them out there, and I want to see them as soon as possible. It's very important because I've talked to a few people that were speaking, and some don't even pay attention to the stop sign when you come into here, you know? They don't pay attention, they just swerve around. And I almost had two accidents. Right there, that stop sign, and that's wrong. We need to get some police in the area more than once a week. You know, and I know you're saying that we don't have enough policemen, but we need to get some so that they can patrol different areas. And the other thing is, is that we still have a problem with the street. I don't know why we can't get our street looking nice, smooth, without all that bumping and jumping and getting on. You know, that messes tires up. And I know we don't, and I don't, I don't do tires. I hustle, yeah. I don't do them. So go ahead and get the, get the road sticks, get signs up for the children to keep them safe. And the other thing is, we got a lot of houses that are just tore up in the community. And I look to see if anybody lives in those houses, and they do. But you would think some animals live in the houses. Some are right there on wilderness. Some is on YPD, on around the corner and everywhere. And that's not good. We want people to come in our community. The other thing is, I would like for us to get a Y M C A here. Because I shouldn't have to go to Cameron to the Y M C A. I should have one right here. I think I'm old enough to get one. And, uh, but, yeah. But anyway, those are some of the things that I would like to see done. God be the glory.
Thank you, Stanford. Next, it is Marshall Proctor, please. Same name, just for reference.
Marshall Proctor. And I'm here to hear about the policy because you guys are used to address it. And I want to know who is exempt from following the town policies. And I know you guys said you can't answer, but I did watch that meeting last week, or a week before, and you guys were answering questions. So if you're not going to answer now, then give me a time where I can sit down and have my concerns addressed. And I think that as a taxpayer and a resident of the county of Spring Lake, I'm owed that.
That's it. Lot of work. If you could get with Ms. Proctor before the meeting, give her a schedule on my calendar for this week. All right, we will now move on to our presentations, beginning with Commissioner Poses.
Yard of the Month, all right. Well, Yard of the Month is an opportunity for the town. Our appearance committee is able to recognize our neighbors who upkeep and maintain their properties in a way that beautifies the town. And our appearance committee does have a vacancy, so if you want to help, you know, establish a section of the town that you can take on to recognize the Yard of the Month, we'd be happy to have you. We also do community cleanups. We have one on September twentieth at nine A M. at the rec center. So Yard of the Month, we have two winners for September. Billy Campbell out of Manchester Forest and Benny Hopson, right behind the school area. I forget what we call that area, Spring. Huh?
Uptown.
Uptown. Are any of those winners? No? All right. Well, we'll get these certificates over to them, and thank you very much. And let's give them a round our neighbor.
We'll continue on our presentation. I have agenda item seven, the CAPER Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation. Mr. Balt, hi, from Columbia. You're the community development director and county chief of staff. Roger Cool, hi, I'm Tom.
Hi, that is my phone.
Oh, that's a good one.
So Mr. Turner's going to pass on some swag bags to you. And we came, Mayor, yes, because this is nice. I've been married since February, so it looks very nice in here. But good evening to you, Mayor, and to you Commissioners. I last saw you in February. We were talking about the consolidated plan for fiscal year, well, program year twenty-twenty-five through program year twenty-twenty-nine. And so, of course, that is a strategic plan that we do every five years to encompass our needs for housing, homelessness or unhoused needs, as well as it serves as our, as our first year for our annual action plan. And so that's all wrapped up in that one plan. So we kind of go through a cycle over the course of a five-year period. Every five years, we do the consolidated plan. Every three years, you saw me in here last September to talk about the urban county designation. So we did that last year. And then we come in normally in the, in the fall and do the AAP, which is the annual action plan. And then we come to you in September, we talk about the, um, the CAPER, which is the consolidated annual performance evaluation report. And so what is that? That is basically our report card for how do we do with our AAP for that particular year. One of the good things about a CAPER is, of course, it's a self-report card. So it allows us to take the information from the AAP, and then we say to ourselves, not as a pass or fail, but how do we do this year with our, our, our CAPER? It's very objective with the numbers. And so, for example, maybe we said, and this is what we did last year, we said, well, we have two rehab specialists. Each are going to do eleven projects this year for twenty-two projects. And so very objectively, did you do all twenty-two projects? Was it twenty? Was it twenty-one? And maybe we overstated, understated, maybe we only did twenty-two, but we had the capacity to do thirty, for example. We can adjust in our next AAP to make sure that we are, um, even through the consolidated plan process, meeting those goals. Because we don't want to get to the end of the consolidated plan process, and then we have a big hole of, you know, hey, we overshot, or we were too oversold in this area, or we should have been focusing over in this area. And so the board county commissioners approved the consolidated plan at their August eleventh meeting, and so I submitted that to HUD on August fifteenth. And so typically, when you submit a consolidated plan, HUD will then evaluate, uh, do a, a field office evaluation at the Greensboro office, and then it will send it out to the federal, the, uh, the main office to look at like content. And so happy to say that there were no major issues with our consolidated plan, and so they didn't slap me on the head too hard. I just forgot one form, had to submit that form, and so they did accept our, our consolidated plan. So we are, um, all, you know, full cylinders ahead with that. Like I said, with the CAPER, um, one of the things that was discussed during our consolidated plan, um, presentation or public hearing, um, one of our commissioners, Commissioner Tyson, um, asked me specifically, um, how do we track performance measure, measures for, um, our, uh, annual process? And so my response was, we do a CAPER, which is, which is annual. Um, but he said, well, is there a big one that you do every five years that will encompass the entire consolidated plan? We don't do that. And so sounded good to me, so we're going to start doing that. Uh, we're going to create a dashboard, and we're going to have those metrics, uh, on the county website. Another thing that maybe think when he was saying that was, we come before the various, um, boards across the county, and we talk about, you know, what we do at community development, um, our various programs. But one thing I think that we miss sometimes when we come talk to the various boards are, you know, what are the numbers, what are the specifics for your jurisdiction, you know? And if I'm, if I'm doing an urban county designation, I want to know that I'm getting some type of benefit from being a part of that urban county designation. So that will also be addressed in that dashboard. You know, we can look at the big picture, but then drill down to see, you know, what's going on in my jurisdiction. And it's not a good or bad thing to see numbers or not to see numbers. It may just be a situation where, um, we need to do more marketing in a particular area, or people don't know that a resource exists. And so that's one thing that we want to, um, you know, do from the county side to make sure that benefits. I will tell you, Spring Lake is one of our largest, um, uh, contributors with our applications. So there's no, there's no lack of Spring Lake residents coming out and applying for funding, but there are some other towns, um, where we had, um, one, two, or none apply. Um, and so you all have done, uh, I think, an awesome job in getting the word out to your residents, um, over the many years that you've been doing this, this program. And so I always come before you to talk about our various programs. I think you all could probably talk about it more than I can at this point, because you've heard of them. Um, but I will just briefly say, I always thought of look our bread and butter. Um, our bread and butter project, uh, program at community development is our housing rehab program. And so I always mention that that's a, a dual program. There is a, what we call a, a major and a minor. And so with the, with the major housing rehab, we're looking at the equity in the individual's home, and we can use up to eighty percent of that equity to do a rehabilitation project. Sorry. Did I say that right? Thank you, I did, I did say it right. I got to catch myself, because sometimes I say rehab, and sometimes I say renovation. It is not a renovation, it is a rehab. So if there's existing structure like a, like a room or a bathroom, we would work to rehab that room or bathroom. What we're not doing is taking that room and making that half bath that you always wanted. Um, unless there is some type of health and safety situation aging in place that would require that. Um, then we have the minor program. Last year, I asked the county man, county manager, and he allowed me to go to the board of county commissioners to ask for an increase in that program. And so we raised that as a grant program, raised it to thirty thousand dollars. And so we're able to do a thirty thousand dollar grant for that house or that homeowner to do those, um, health and safety, um, uh, repairs in the home. One of the things that people like to see in that program is, some people are a little, a little standoffish, and I'm kind of that way, too, about, hey, you want to build on my house? Some people are more amenable to having a, a grant, you know, program that they can just, you know, have the work done, there's no, you know, wipe your hands of it, you're done, as opposed to, uh, the full program where you are, um, is a deferred regivable loan, but you are required to remain in that property for a fifteen-year period. Um, a lot of people that we deal with are, um, are elderly, up in age, and so that's a concern sometimes, you know, about, um, you know, I, I had this mindset with you last week, well, baby, I don't want to be here in fifteen years. And so I said, I understand that, but that program allows, um, the, uh, the links to paths to a qualifying family member, like a, like a spouse or a child. And so there's, we, we try to limit the risk of, um, that asset leaving the family. Um, and there's various other programs, um, that you all have hardly talked about, but you can go to Cumberland County N C dot G O B and click on the community's development webpage. And, um, I'm joking, but I'm looking back at, um, Assistant County Manager Heather Skeens. Um, she supervises the, uh, the, uh, community development director, so that position's going to be posted pretty soon, and so maybe you won't see me next time. Um, I'll, I'll be around, but I'll try to answer any questions that you have about, um, the CAPER or any of our programs.
Are there any questions in the morning? Commissioner Poses.
Hey, so you had, were you giving an example when you said you have two rehab specialists? That's an example, or you do have?
I do have two rehab specialists. And, and they actually, for this, for program year, uh, so it's a year behind federal government, so I, I probably mentioned, I think I said, program year twenty-five, that is our F Y twenty-six. And so for F Y twenty-six, basically, um, the annual action plan, we, we put in there that they would do twenty-two projects, which is eleven projects per, uh, rehab specialist.
Okay. So eleven was accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and this is, those projects, they're awarded based on applicants, of course, but what determines priority there? Is that going to be based on the need?
It is, of course, there's eligibility, so there's a process. Somebody, um, puts in an inquiry, and then we actually do an application for that person. And so based on, one of the things that goes into consideration is the eligibility. Do you qualify based on income, um, that sort of thing? Um, and then we will, depending on how many applications we receive, um, we will rank them in, in, in order of need-based, need-based, and so, of course, you know, if you're coming in, lots of us do. Sometimes, a lot of times, what I like to do is we will still send someone out to the property to, to look at the property, because folks who don't deal in housing don't always know, um, how to, they don't pay for what they're dealing with. And so you may come in and you may put your application, I need, you know, whether it is my windows, and I'm joking, but I may come out to your house and I see a, a hole in yours, so I'm like, well, what about the hole? Which is a health and safety priority. So we will still do a, uh, a precursor screening, um, to put them in some type of order to determine, um, how we're going to address that. We try to, every, we try to get to everybody, um, but if we do have an influx of applications, we do have to do some type of ranking for them.
Okay. And I know you said Spring Lake is one of the largest contributors for applying. Uh, what kind of number would you put on that?
As far as applications?
And projects.
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 I should have had that number. Um, I should have had the number, but dashboard, um, it will be on the dashboard, but I will say percentage-wise, I would say probably forty to forty-five percent of applications, our spring like applications. Um, and then I want to say, and you, I know you all have seen some of our affordable housing that we do in Spring Lake, the majority here as well. Um, I think, I think we're working on twenty of those for the program year as well. Um, but, um, I would say about forty-five percent, and probably forty-five percent awarded as well. I would say that.
Thank you. I'm glad, because, uh, this is probably, um, the programs under, under CAPER. I talk about them constantly, developers as well as residents towards you. So I'm glad to hear that Spring Lake is actually showing us to get the benefits of these services. That's a good thing.
And we, and we appreciate it, Mayor, because, um, we've heard, look, I've heard about, I've, I was, I ran as Spring Lake mayor and school governor and wherever, you know, and so you're always talking about, you appreciate that.
Absolutely. Commissioner Lachlan.
Thank you, ma'am. Whatever job that you have, keep coming back, you know? Whether it's your current job or, or a higher one, you know, we appreciate that, being able to put the information out to the residents so that we, we can build up Spring Lake and make it a better place. And so the homes and the residents have, have quality homes to live in, so keep coming back, keep, keep spreading the word, and we'll keep doing our part, so I'd like you.
Yes, sir. We're all team Cumberland County.
And questions for the board? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll move on to our final presentation of the evening. Uh, Cumberland County, welcome back. Cumberland County Health Department Programs and Services, Dr. Jennifer Green, Health Director, Cumberland County Department of Health.
Good afternoon. It's one of those, it's been a long day. Thank you all for having me. I'm here to just provide a, um, an overview of some of the health department services that we provide. I forget that when we're in it every day, that, um, a lot of folks don't know all the things that we provide. And, you know, one of the things I tell our new staff is people, um, think we provide flu shots and S P testing at the health department, and that's what they know about public health. Um, and we do so much more than that. And so we're excited to be able to just give you a, a very quick rundown of the services that we provide. And I'm, I'm over here, it's almost fifteen minutes, and that should come off if we, if I'm running. So, uh, but we do do provide a, um, quite a bit, few of services, so I will give high level overview, and then if you all have specific questions, then I'm happy to go back in detail, but this will be your, your quick primer of health department services that we provide. So, um, next slide, please. Oh, you told me the remote, and I started using myself. Okay, so our mission, um, at the health department is to provide high-quality services, and our vision is to make sure we're helping people living in a healthy community. So not just the people that we live in, but all the, the spaces and places around us we want to be healthy. Uh, so I'm not going to read the slide to you, but I click here, just so you can see the breadth and scope of services that we provide, uh, at the health department. Everything from billing to environmental health, to food safety, to immunizations and clinical and non-clinical services. So we'll, we'll take a deep dive into a few of our clinical services that we get questions about more often. Uh, so we provide a health clinic. We do that on a, on a sliding B scale. Um, uh, we are, uh, many of our community members are primary care providers, so if people forget that, not every health department does primary care, but we do. We do your well-child visits, we do your sick visits, uh, we do, um, your sports physicals, and if you're our patient, and we'll bill for those services, and if you are uninsured, we do those on a sliding B scale. Um, and then we also, um, do dental and hearing admission screenings as well. And I'll, we have a new partnership with the U N C mobile hearing unit, and they come down, um, once, uh, every other month to bring our mobile unit to do more advanced vision and hearing screening for folks that need us. Um, we also have a family planning clinic, so this, uh, provides services, um, it's a Title X federally funded program. It provides family planning services, again, on a sliding B scale. Um, we also have a teen clinic, so teens can come in and get confidential service for us. We also make sure that we encourage them to talk with their parents, um, and do one-on-one counseling with those teens. Um, and then we also do pregnancy test counseling. Oftentimes, to get Medicaid, uh, pregnancy Medicaid, um, you need a pregnancy test from us, and we can provide that service, and they connect, um, that's oftentimes the starting point for lots of our community members, they'll get a pregnancy test with us, and then we can connect them to all sorts of different resources, um, within the health department and external to health department. Um, we have a maternity clinic, so let's say you have that positive pregnancy test, they're going to refer you to our maternity clinic. Uh, we provide, um, low-risk pregnancy care. Um, if you are a high-risk pregnancy, we, we have a partnership and a collaboration with CAPER at E G Y N, and we'll get you over and refer to CAPER. But we do, uh, low-risk pregnancy, uh, low-risk, uh, maternity care, all of your prenatal care, all of your postnatal care. Uh, we also do a childbirth education class, and I'll make a plug for that. We are relaunching, um, our childbirth education class, that will be, um, starting on Tuesdays in September from five-thirty to seven-thirty, um, that's a five-sentence class. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about our baby store, just a little bit, but, um, you can also get baby bucks for our baby store in the, um, in a childbirth education class. That clinic does a lot of referrals and, um, a lot of referrals for other community services as well. Um, we also do sort of broad, uh, systems level maternal health care. We help to support our parental coalition, which I'll talk about in just a little bit. Uh, we, in the last F Y, and again, in this F Y, uh, we fund two community-based duels that, um, provide duo services for those that are uninsured and underinsured. Uh, we, um, are, we, that, our, we just closed Friday, so we were doing those applications for new, um, two new duo services, um, here for the next, um, F Y. Uh, very shortly, each of those agencies give seventy-five thousand dollars to serve about thirty and, um, thirty births per duo. Um, we have a hear her campaign. Uh, that is our social media and digital media campaign around maternal health outcomes and making sure that those that, uh, with women say that they are in pain after post-birth, that we believe them, so that oftentimes that's a maternal health emergency, and we need to educate the community to make sure those moms get to the E R. Uh, we also have a baby store that we're very proud of, that is, uh, a little store that's inside the health department, and it's like a little, uh, retail store. You can go, and you can shop in the store with your baby bucks, and I'll talk a little bit about how you earn baby bucks throughout the presentation, but going to your maternal visit or your childbirth visit, you earn baby bucks, and you can go shop in our store for diapers and wipes and, and onesies and car seats and all sorts of things that you might need to have care for your child. Um, our newest, uh, program around, um, maternal health is, are called Thriving Hearts. That program is really looking at maternal health holistically. We want to measure and make sure the workforce that we have taking care of our moms are well, and so it has a little bit of mindfulness component to that. There's also community health workers that we're going to be onboarding in October that can be sort of peer navigators for our families. And then we also have, um, that program will provide blood pressure cuffs and, um, low dose aspirin to our, our moms that might need it and might otherwise have access to that. And then our Healthy Start program has a fatherhood coordinator, a couple of other community health workers. And then our Healthy Start program has a fatherhood coordinator, a couple of other community health workers, and some social workers that will help you from pre and on thinking about pregnancy, all the way to postpartum, eighteen months, that can help to serve and kind of provide round-round services for that family. We also have our BSET program, or what we call Breast and Cervical Cancer Program. This provides breast exams and cervical, cervical breast exam and pelvic exams for our families. They are, you have to meet some income guidelines, they're on the screen, and you have to be a woman between the ages of fifty and sixty-four. And then if you have a positive screening for that, we will help get you connected to other services at our community. We have a robust epidemiology and community disease clinic. That, our Epi team, if you will, is a small but mighty team. We are responsible for receiving reports for over eighty different communicable diseases. And so that team, three people, three or four people, investigate all of those communicable diseases to make sure that we're safe in the community. And then our STD clinic also operates five days a week, and they do walk-in services and HIV testing, STD testing. The, the sort of, they have high rates here in Cumberland County of STDs, and that clinic is operational, is a busy clinic. So those are services that we provide to the community at no cost, regardless of your health insurance. And they also do a number of outreach clinics in the community to make sure we're getting the testing, not just in the four walls of the health department, but throughout the community. We also have our immunization clinic. It's a walk-in immunization clinic. And we purposely do that so that if people can't get in with their healthcare provider, they can come see us. I'll make a plug, it is back-to-school immunization time. Please, please send your students. They have thirty days from the start of the school year to do those back-to-school immunizations, and that clock is already ticking. We are getting ready to do several outreach clinics. Tomorrow is our late-night clinic at the health department. And then we will be at four schools, including here in Spring Lake. Let's see what the Spring Lake is. Next Monday will be, the twenty-second, we'll be in Spring Lake for our outreach clinic, for our school students. And that will be for kindergartners, seventh graders, and twelfth graders. And we, we want those students to come in, but year-round, we provide those immunizations for all of our, our community members, not just back-to-school, but all of our adult immunizations as well. We have our school health program, and we provide the school health nurses for all of our Cumberland County schools. Each school health nurse has about four schools that they cover. They are responsible for the vision screening, the, a little bit of that pet management, the hearing screenings, their asthma action plans. They have a role and to play in all of those. And so in addition to the sort of day-to-day, I don't feel good, I'm gonna go see your school health nurse, they help to cover all of those for all of our Cumberland County schools. And then we have our C mark and C submark program. Those are Medicaid programs, case management programs, our high-risk, our, our care management for high-risk pregnancies, so all of our Medicaid families that are high-risk, have a high-risk pregnancy. We don't see them in our clinic, but they are gonna go to other clinics in the community, and our care manager's gonna go with them. They're gonna handle them all the way through their pregnancy to make sure that they have the services that they need. And then the same thing on the child side. If they have a child that's medic, that's enrolled in Medicaid, and they need a, a case manager, a social worker, a nurse to kind of handful them through that process, make sure they get those well-child visits, we're gonna do that for them and make sure that they get the care that they need. We also provide adult health services in collaboration with community partners. So we have, we work with Steadman Way Health Services and Cumberland Health Net to sort of co, they're co-located at the health department, and they provide services in our building for our adults. So we don't directly provide adult primary care, we work with these two agencies to do that. Steadman Way does that on a sliding B scale basis, based on income. And then Steadman Way is our safety net clinic, and they specifically work with four high-risk conditions. Our health education and health ed division, if you see us out at an event that are, and we're tackling, it's probably our health ed, health education team. They're the ones out there doing every back-to-school fair, every church event, every community event. They have a range of topics that they can present on. We just ask for a little bit of notice so that they can plan and come out to a community event. And they're well-versed in a number of topics, and they have a, they do smoking cessation, a matter of balance for our senior citizens. They often work with your Parks and Rec Center and your Parks and Rec folks to do those services. Our WIC program, we have four WIC locations on, one on Ramsey Street, our newest one is at Fort Bragg, one here in Spring Lake, and then one in Oak Hills. And we provide WIC services for our pregnant women, our postpartum women, our infants, and then our children up to the age of five. One thing that people might not know about that is we also do breast front rentals, and we provide breastfeeding support for all of our families as well. And then we have a certified lactation consultant that's on our team, along with dietitians and breastfeeding peer counselors. Environmental health, these are, this is the area where we have lots of complaints, so we need our restaurant. Our team is the one that's doing those restaurant inspections for the entire county. But they also do the response to our nuisance complaints. They also do a rabies clinic twice a year. We are teaching a food, they do our food safety forum that we host in collaboration with FTCC. They do our pool inspections for not private home pools, but all of our public pools, they're gonna go out and do those inspections. And those are all based off of, of risk and depend on the number of times in years that they provide that particular service. And they also do our childcare facilities as well. And then we have our medical records and vital records team, so if people need, have a question about their vital record, their version of their, etc., we process those. Our register of deeds office is the person that provides you your birth, your birth or death certificate, but we help them process those. And then we do medical records as well for our health department-specific patients. And then we have our program, one of our newer programs is called Connected Care. That's our family resource center here in Spring Lake. That is in cooperation between us and DSS. We have a team with a nutritionist, a social worker, some health educators, and a nurse. And you can think about that as sort of the safety net team, that low barrier to entry. I have a community member that needs some assistance in navigation of the healthcare system and needs community resources, but isn't quite, doesn't know where to go. That team can really help them and provide them with direction and service delivery. Triple P is our positive parenting program. We often get questions that people ask us, well, what is out there for the parents? Somebody ought to put that person in a parenting class. We offer that. So our Triple P program offers a online parenting class, and this is a national program. But we also do classes at the health department, so every few months, we will do a parenting series that can help as close to a parenting handbook as you can think of. We will offer those classes at the health department, and then people can take Triple P online at any time for free, as long as they're in North Carolina resident. We do tobacco cessation. We help to promote the North Carolina Quit Line. We often get questions about if we're the ones that go and inspect the tobacco store or the vape shops. We don't do that. But we often help to provide education and help people develop policy and then do some making prevention. Healthy Conversations is our collaboration with our local barber shops. So we've trained twenty barber shops to be lay health educators. And those health educators focus on heart disease, cancer, prostate cancer, heart health. And they educate their clients, whether they're getting a haircut or getting their hairstyle, and just short, quick, meaningful conversations, and they connect them back to a community resource that they need. And so in fact, Wednesday, they'll be doing a prostate panel, prostate cancer discussion here over at the health department, and you all are welcome to attend. And that'll be a free kind of learning time for people to just a little bit learn about prostate cancer. We have our Uber Health program, and so that program provides free transportation to any of our health department locations. It'll be a round-trip location. If you've got an appointment or a walk-in visit, we can put you in a tour to the health department for free, and we'll take you back to where you're gonna go. We're not, we're not gonna make stops a long way, take the first door to the mall, but we will take you to your health department appointment, whether it's for immunizations or whether it's for your WIC appointment or your child health appointment. We'll bring you to the health department, and we'll take you back to school or to work or for all. Our Cumberland Bit Little Oatmeal Response Team, that's our C four team. This division really works around our oatmeal response, so they do everything from overdose prevention education, training, media campaigns. We've got a peer support specialist on that team. And then we also often help to administer our oatmeal supplement funds. And so we are just now, we are hoarding another round of oatmeal supplement funds. And so that, that work is really supported by that. And then we often, we also do smart recovery groups to help the community. And then we have our, our newest location is our Recovery Resource Center, which is over on Seven O Seven Executive Place. That team has a peer support specialist on that that will help get people connected to care. They can walk in, they do recovery groups and a lock-in distribution, they will do good care kits, they will, anything that people need to help support their recovery. They connect with the TIES team, with housing, they've done childbirth education classes there, we've done STD testing and flu shot clinics there. Anything that we can do to help individuals be successful in their recovery journey. This Saturday, we're doing our Fun in the Sun event over at the health department. We'll be providing back-to-school immunizations. People always ask us, when are you gonna do that? On the evening or on the weekend? This is the time, we're gonna do it on the weekend. It's this Saturday from September thirteenth, from ten to two. We'll also provide, we'll have little mini classes, we'll do a little CPR class, we'll do a nutrition education class. We'll have all of, we'll have two floors full of vendors. We'll have physical activity, fun dancing, line dancing, salsa, lots of kind of physical activity, get up and move techniques for the community. And then we've got, we also support a number of task force for your, for your information. We provide, we support our parented task force, we have a breast lead coalition, a teen wellness task force, our crisis collaborative slash clinical mapping task force that works with criminal health and criminal justice aversion. And then we also support a food policy council. That's a lot of information. What questions, what questions, I think I did, I don't know if I did a good team, but what questions can I answer for you?
Well, thank you for that wealth of information. These are services that should be broadcasted from the rooftop. So you can come all the time and tell us about the services, just to make sure that we can get the word out to the community. Cause there are some things, you know, that I need to be known about. Absolutely. You guys have a robust catalog of services. So thank you for bringing this to the town. What's your topic?
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this information. I happened to meet one of your workers probably about a month and a half ago, and they gave me a clever information that I did not know. So I wanna tell them thank you, because I'm one of the ones, I had my son immunization, and I didn't know about extended hours. So I wanna say you're doing a great job with your workers, but they were very informed. So thank you for coming today.
Wonderful. Yes, and I, for folks, that is the second Tuesday of every month that we do our late-night clinic. And then, we do that throughout the year, not just for back-to-school immunizations, but, and then we try to grow in another late-night clinic every now and then. When you, when there's really a need for that.
We have a question for you. Any questions?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on to our new business, agenda item eight A, Budget Amendment BA FY twenty-two six. Is there opportunity?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This budget amendment is to carry forward some purchase orders for projects that were started last year. We gave a contract to Highland Baby Company last year to spend our pile of bill money to resurface a bunch of streets throughout town and also to do some stormwater improvements that are practically needed on Edmore Circle. He began those projects, he did some of the work in June, but he's not finished, so we're just carrying forward the balance of that contract. The other is, back last year, we ordered two kiosks so that people could pay twenty, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And here is one of those kiosks right here. There is one correction. The original agenda that you got showed a budget amendment of fifty-eight thousand. That was the actual cost of the kiosk. I've added twenty thousand to that. The original quote did not include shipping, and also did not include the cost to have it wired and the, to put the concrete pad under it and do the paving, and tear out the drive-through window and replace it with that. So the total cost, including all of the installation, will be seventy-eight thousand instead of fifty-eight thousand. But the others are just carrying forward contracts that we awarded last year that had been completed yet.
This is exciting. I love pretty shiny new electronics, but I love communities even more. And so this is a good thing for us to move, to bring that forward to the future. Accessibility for real, putting online through our app and now through a digital kiosk. So, good job. Any questions or comments from the board? What's your topic?
Okay, I just wanna say that I want to commend the staff and the town manager for the work to provide this opportunity for this additional resource park community. But I wanna know, is this going to eliminate jobs in our water department? And is it gonna eliminate our windows, which provides customer service for our community? Especially our citizens who are ADA or have disabilities? I'm in favor of it, if it's a, a choice or a resource for them, but I just wanna know, is it gonna eliminate jobs?
I will refer that question to our town manager.
Yes. Yes.
Is it gonna eliminate customer service, like, so are we not gonna have a window at all anymore?
There will not be an external window. There'll be a drive-up kiosk. You'll be able to get information via online, via the website. That's driven by technology. And the goal is to convert some of the dollars used back into our system to fix our water issue as well.
You will still have the option of coming inside. If you, if you need additional customer service, you have questions, you can still come inside and pay.
So, and I think my next question is, so if it is gonna eliminate jobs, will they be reassigned to a different position or will they just be eliminated altogether?
It depends on nutrition rates and the possibility. We're always seeking to reassign them.
I mean, I love this idea, but I don't know if I'm in favor of it, because it's gonna eliminate so much job. I mean, all for technology. And, and I do believe technology is good, but at the same time, we talk about economic development, it's gonna eliminate somebody's job. And we can't be sure that we're gonna be assigned into another position. I can't be sure that I'm in favor of this. Is that my right? Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Could you pause this?
Thank you. So I think we've already approved fifty-eight thousand, right? Or we've approved the first of these, we're just increasing the...
For the installation, yes. The shipping and installation.
Because the cost we didn't, we weren't aware of.
What the, so we didn't have those numbers last year. All we had on the original quote was the cost of the machine itself.
Of the machine itself, yeah. And I, I think that this is a cash card type of machine. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so no matter how you get paid...
You can choose the cash and credit cards.
And I think there's a small convenience fee too.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If there's already a convenience fee, you're buying with your card, the only way you can avoid it is if you have your payment with your water bill automatic.
Yeah. The one thing I will let you know, right now, we take MasterCard and Visa. This machine also accepts American Express.
Okay, all right. And when we talk about the jobs, like Commissioner Chadwick brought up, this is, these are jobs based on the water and sewer budget, right? Not the general fund. That's correct, okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions that can come to the board? Well, I'm not in the ten motion to approve Budget Amendment BA six fiscal year twenty-two six. Commissioner Placio?
So moved.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our updates, and I only have a few. So I got a chance to visit the schools with our new health department's director, Dr. Erin Bracy. It was a chance for him to have a one-on-one time with our principals here to actually put real eyes and face time on the conditions of our school here. He was, I can tell you, he was very open to the suggestions that were made by the principals. He was, I can say he was very open to the suggestions that were made by principals and I am confident that we're going to see a lot more activity from the county within our school system as far as making sure that Manchester Elementary has central air and not using mold-infested window units, to do some of our ADA compliance on Spring Lake Middle. He did have a chance to, based on his schedule, get to WT Brown, but he has since pledged to come back to the town of Spring Lake so that he can spend individual time with each school, making sure, you know, applauding them for the things that's right, making sure that he's correcting deficiencies. I also got a chance to spend, or I told you about the feasibility study we're doing with UNC Chapel Hill grad students, well, I had the chance to spend my Saturday with them, they came down and we got a chance to walk around the grounds of Lilian Black. These are young city planners, these are, they're being trained to be able to look at the city and find the potential based on the data that they collect and they were very excited, I got a chance to take them to visit some of our business owners, we had a chance to visit Sandy Hill's farmer's market, where they had a chance to get some of the history of Lilian Black, they spoke with Mayor Dawkins and he was telling about his experience there. And so if there's anybody who wants to contribute information or you have stories to share about Lilian Black or ideas, you'll see some town halls coming in the future so that we can get community input, but we really want to make sure that we repurpose Lilian Black in a manner that is not only financially sound, but something that the community wants to see. So we'll have a, they'll be prepared in November to present their findings to the town, they have invited us to come to Chapel Hill to be a part of their presentation. I also found out that Spring Lake was their number one choice, they thought that this is the history and the story behind Lilian Black was something that they really, really wanted to be a part of, once they saw the grounds, they were fully invested, so I'm super excited to see what comes from this study. Lunch with the mayor is on the 24th of this month, we have not determined the location just yet, I don't know when I'm going to, if you guys have some suggestions, let me know. They will have some barbecue over down the street at Spring Lake Baptist, their first Baptist. So I want to let you know that Menosa Park is buzzing, I drive by there every day and that park is being very well utilized and it warms my heart to see things out there early in the morning to later in the day, just really enjoying that park, so good job to come over there and park some recreation for finally getting Menosa Park completed. Make sure that you check your voter registration, if you remember a few months back, there was a major purge in our voting rolls in North Carolina, so just go to the State Board of Elections, North Carolina State Board of Elections, to make sure that you are still a registered voter in the state of North Carolina. And that is all I have. Commissioner Thompson?
The only thing I have is only Fridays from 5:30 to 7:00 over at Cornerstone Fish and Power Dinner, they are taking donations for their Hands for Hope Shelter or facility they have there and so you can get a fried fish dinner and fried chicken dinner for small donation. That's all I have, thank you.
One more, Grand Facility, that's a toll-free facility every time. Download the app, we only, we only get about less than 600 people who's downloaded this app. We want to be connected, if you've all got our phones, please download the Town of Spring Lake app. Commissioner Chad?
Thank you very much. Saturday, we had cleanup, we had six volunteers, one of them stood out there in the audience, Charles, cleaned up 480 pounds off the, off the streets, Commissioner Thompson was out there as well, so we got one up here, one up there, so good job on that. Commissioner Plasios had mentioned the cleanup in September, but on Saturday, September 13th, the MBACK is hosting a voter run, it'll begin at VFW 4542, it will end at the American Legion and all proceeds will benefit the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. So if you'd ride or if you want to be a part of it, we welcome anybody that would like to participate in it. And the deadline for the submission for the nominees for Veteran of the Year is Friday, September 19th and you can email clerk@townofspringlake.com or marlonblackman@townofspringlake.com to fill out an application and then we will look over the applications and on November 7th, we will announce the fourth Veteran of the Year of Spring Lake. That's it for me, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Plasios?
Thank you. So we have a town cleanup on September 20th at 9:00 AM, starting at the Red Center and as the mayor mentioned, Menosa Park's looking great, Dimitri, the artist for the mural out there is complete, he's a perfectionist, so he wants to keep adding stuff and we've got to tell him to go home, but he's doing a great job and it turned out so much better than I thought it was going to look like. So we think, we're thankful that we were able to use funds not from the town to get that done, that was a huge part of it, as well as some funds from Patrick Morrison who donated to make sure that could happen as well. So anyway, the mural's looking great, Spring Lake Park is looking like, it doesn't look like the Spring Lake Park in the pattern, like, you know, I don't mean to be offensive, it looks great. We're very thankful, thank you.
And that pad up there is super soft and for those who are wondering, no, I did not go down the slide.
I did.
Commissioner Chad? Okay, so last Thursday, I had an opportunity to fellowship with Coming Home Schools, I attended a faith leaders prayer breakfast and this is basically a conversation about how we can collaborate to help our students be more successful with our faith leaders. And one thing that I liked that he said is that he's not running away from it, but he's running to it because he knows how beneficial it can be with our faith leaders involved in our students' education and I'm a total winner with that and it was just a great program and he's really looking to have more faith leaders extend to our schools and help our students. So anybody in Compton County, he wants your help, he wants our faith leaders involved.
Ms. Roy?
I get to announce that we have hired a code enforcement sergeant, he is assigned to the police department, he will be taking on the daily duties of code enforcement all over town, working collaboratively with our building inspector who we've also hired here recently in the last two or three months. Now, the benefit of this speaks to everything that we face inside, whether it's jump piles or high grass or whatever, and so I kind of want to give you a little highlight of how some of that works, is that even though it seems easy, there's, somebody has to know their grass, just go out there and buy the grass, it don't work that way. Somebody's got a jump pile in the front yard, go out there and tell them to do a jump pile, it don't work that way. There is a process that we have to follow, especially in terms of, it's supposed to be kind of a procedural due process and a prescriptive or statutory process. For example, I know that it's for a year and a half that I've been here, there's been a lot of conversation about a particular building on Main Street, I have met with the owner of that building, we discussed its current condition, we have actually issued a notice of violation that it is a public health hazard, a public nuisance and therefore it needs to be brought up to code or demolished. This building owner has agreed to demolish the building. It has been a long, long process and so we will have a procedural due process of that, you have to issue a notice of violation, you have to give them a public hearing, that public hearing is on Tuesday, 15, Wednesday, I think it's 15, what's this Wednesday? What's the date?
The 10th.
Yeah, we know the best Wednesday, we know the best. Yeah, I don't know why, but the 10th, and so, he said, we will go ahead and he says, he, you know, the building owner, said, let's go ahead and go through the public hearing process and he goes, yes, we will, and he says, but I'm prepared and willing to remove the building. And so the process, code enforcement, is not about just identifying, it's about, they, there's various strategies that you can do, rather than us going down, going to this building and saying, okay, you have to bring it up to speed or demolish it, here's the time period that you've got to do it, when they don't do that, then we can step in and take action. And then we have to actually file a special assessment on that property. So keep in mind that we have to use public dollars to demolish a private property, to determine somewhere around $30,000 and then we put it as a special assessment in the hopes of recollecting. If we don't collect those, those public dollars at that expense, then we have to condemn the foreclosure on the property and take the property. So there's this whole process that you have to go through. Some of you will recall, the way this started was a property on, right Boulevard out here that had a bunch of stuff in front of it and so we kept getting these updates, getting these updates, getting these updates in terms of code enforcement, what's going on, what's happening, but at the end of the day, nothing was happening, we just kept identifying. So we went and we actually removed it and submitted invoice for them to collect, for us to collect on our, our use of public dollars to clean it up, it's about $100, we submitted that invoice in December of '24, we have yet to collect that $100. This process is time-consuming and I am so glad that Police Chief will have somebody to help him do what needs to be done, it is a priority for this community, we have over 100 wide properties, when you do the math on that, it becomes astronomical in terms of the expense and how you can carry this out. At the end of the day, our goal is to go through this process and hopefully get to the point where we can have corrective, innovative action on 16 properties per year or basically four per zone. That's it in a nutshell, I'm glad that we finally got somebody, now we're going to keep it.
Awesome. That's amazing news, y'all, you've been, you've heard for several years about cleaning up, y'all come up here and tell us to clean up, this is the process it takes, there weren't timing to clean up, but I'm so glad that we, we've made it here. I did want to make sure I say thank you to staff and to Ms. Carley for all the hard work that they planned to create a successful First Friday, we had a lot of fun out there, they danced all night, all night long, it was just a lot of fun, so next First Friday is the first Friday in October, so please come out, we will be celebrating, we spend a heritage month for October, so please come out and celebrate with us. Commissioner Blackman, you have one more thing?
Yes, ma'am, I want to say this for the very end, but tomorrow's my wife's birthday, I won't say what number it is, but this one is my wife, Janine Blackman, very happy.
Absolutely, we want to make sure her happy birthday too.
She was here with me.
Absolutely. And as far as that kiosk, our clerk has information? Is that the Water Department?
Yeah, the Water Department.
The Water Department. So there will be notices on how to use the kiosks at the Water Department, so I know sometimes technology is a learning curve, so we have step-by-step instructions available for the kiosks. And without any further comments from the board, this meeting is now done.